It is a little after 6:30 and I'll call our meeting to order. We'll call Joel.
I'm here.
Leah's parents, Adam, Sarah's here. Here, Carly's here.
Here.
Is there a meeting on probably those?
Yes.
Okay, please join me.
Steer the flag of the United States of America and to republiq for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would anyone like to please meet the mission statement?
Hi, Karen. The Mount Cora Mary School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve or to revise the agenda? I just wonder if there's... Shall we move the presentation up?
That would be lovely tonight. Would that be okay if we had our presentation early tonight? Would that be okay?
I just figured we've made that wait. Before it's got to start.
Yes, thank you so much.
All right. All right, so maybe have them go 3A. Okay. Do you want to make a motion to approve the revised agenda? Motion by Leah seconded by Carly to approve or revise the... Joel.
That's okay.
Motion by Leah seconded by Tom on the favor of approving our society stuff. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve our discussion second for regular executive meetings?
Second.
Motion by Joel seconded by Adam. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
3A, address four. Crumble, you want to start this off?
Sure, I can start this off. Um, our friends from Custom Canines for joining us this evening. They had a heck of a last month, right after the unfortunate event in Madison, right? We're some of the first on the scene to help support where our friends at Custom Canines. So I think all the work they did there in order to do that for us, just thank them for coming and bringing some friends along as well, which is always so appreciated. Crumble's been with us now, actually, we have him end of August, right around there. And his fit, right, coming into the school and really been such a great support for students, for staff. Thing off the top of my head, I would say, on a daily basis, he will be between, actually, he'll give up more or less than 15, 20 students in a day, right? And sometimes it's a quick five-minute, hey, we need a response, the student's struggling. Many times it's scheduled, give students sort of scheduled meetings, spend time with Crumble. He went on board, nailed over, put you break, so profiling Crumble and some of the things that he's doing with students, right? Just being there and being present. I mean, there are probably a lot of kids who say, well, our community's school because Crumble is here. We have students who can't get out of the car, so what we do, bring Crumble up, Crumble's there, and all of a sudden, the students want to come in and be at school, and then really have them at school. And what a positive impact that has been. And to be able to go back, between the four handlers, four handlers, to go back, and it's myself, Katie getting in here at the middle school, Chris having wire at the middle school, and Emily going over to the high school. At the high school, he spends most of his time in Emily's office, there's times with me, usually it's when he's on a little kind of a nap break, usually Emily's when he's meeting the students, supporting students, or being with groups. And we've got a couple of groups that meet with Crumble at the high school, and another one group that wants to put a camera on him and do a day of the life of Crumble. Would always be interesting. You can see the photo here, there was a, students could get tickets for being caught doing good things, and you put your name into a basket and you can win something. Well, they all actually put Crumble's name on it because they knew that the giant tennis ball was what the prize was. Prefers the smaller one. It just was, it was great to be able to have him. To me, that's the impact he's having, right? When students get, win something for themselves, but they're willing to put his name in because they just want to see these people, he brings joy, walks in a room, and he just walks in sitting here, right, just brings the temperature down, is able to be so supportive. And you know, he's like any dog, he does get to go be a dog on weekends and nights and be a pup, but he, even in the neighborhood, when he's not in his basket, we will see middle school students walking down the street, and it's like he just saw a bunch of buddies from school, like, "Crumble!", and he's all excited. Okay, go, go, take your friends for a while. Okay, you got you, right? I mean, it is, he's a pretty impactful dog, but I think being able to have him here and his name with students, being with groups, I don't know if we have, do we have an example with him that we schedule?
Yes. If you look at a couple of slides, three, that's all I can remember. Oh, it's lovely.
And this was Whisco Radio, we were interviewed early on in the year during the football season, too. This is one of the things to raise money, and I think the, I think it's about 1,500 dollars right now so far raised, and we always, our newsletter, continue to promote and find ways to gain money back to Custom Canines, who really were the ones that were able to bring to us, to be able to support that work they do, whether it's for us, whether it's for other schools, other veterans, really able to get back. And that was kind of, we had a miracle minute, we had QR codes up, we were, and we actually did what, said, we're seeing cash in our office right now that we do need to get to, but it's like getting cash to somebody is, there's actually more paperwork than anything, we need donations like that, but this is the support the community's got, right? If you look here on my Crumble stats, we have a doctor going, and we're able to kind of track what he's doing, when he's doing it, and they do such a great job, staff, just kind of putting it in here, and it's usually, like, on the right, you see some initials of a student's, you know, a student's initials, and the student that he's walking with was also the student that was profiled in the paper. And again, the student that just loves to, maybe might be sort of, might be quiet, and then Crumble comes in, it's a whole new world, the next thing you know, the student is excited and talking. Not uncommon when Crumble walks in, the students chatting. I think people talk to me a lot more, but usually it's him first, and they just go, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, you too." That's where he's difficult. But he's able to add this impact, or the wrong classrooms, and we've got testing tomorrow, tomorrow at middle school, and he's going to go support some classes, they're going to start their testing, because they just know when he walks in, just kind of, there's a couple of students, he can help out, there's been times where he's walked into some classes and he goes directly to a few students, and you know that they must be either struggling or there's something that he can help support them with, and yeah, so he's been doing great. And we also are able to have the IC, I don't know much about Ruby, I don't know if you could, yeah.
I can, it looks like she's having a tough time. But Crumble has a colleague officially, and her name is Ruby, a handler, is kind of, she's incredible. And so through the process of obtaining Crumble, we worked with a lot of school districts in determining what paperwork you need, what things you need to consider outside of just getting a dog and paying for a dog. And part of that process was determining, okay, we need insurance information, there's a whole laundry list, and Kelly was kind enough to provide all of that information and talked through all the group's things, a puppy interview with Dr. Silver, which was really good. Yeah, and we did social posts on that, and then she got right to work at the intermediate center, and all the neighbor great things. It's a very similar thing as with Crumble, most people just want to talk to Ruby rather than humans, but it's a phenomenal program, and so we're hoping that it inspires where else. Again, it's a very rigorous type of training that they need to go through, as well as paperwork procedure, but the benefits are almost, which is phenomenal, obviously. A couple more stats, just a preparation based on the phenomenal self-sprechen that the handlers have put together.
I started, and then Katie getting in, and her question more organized than I am, started to coordinate it, and all these dropdowns, I was like, you know?
He's fantastic, literally, at the beginning, when I was talking to Brian about this, because another school district that does something similar but not as robust, Brian was like, "I don't know, people might not want to film this, ouch, let's just not require this," and then everybody, the handlers, all went through and did this on our own, which is fantastic, thanks for starting that. So Crumble has held to date over 250 individual meetings with students, held over 24 class visits, held over 32 visits with groups of students, he does hallway greetings with students, the list goes on and on, but I just think that's fantastic. He's only been four months in school, and he's accomplished so much, so this is the rule. I hope that Custom Canines is a star, Kat, you're the fruits of their labor here tonight, as well as keep up Crumble's great work, and now Ruby's great work as well, because it's great to see.
Yeah, any questions on, for any on the board, what is day, what kind of, anything that we can answer that you're always wondering about, who just wants to sniff a business now?
He's had a long day.
He has had a long day, he's been here since around seven, so he's going on 12 hours, which is much longer, usually throughout the day, he'll take like an hour or a half break, but he's home by four, and then it's usually like, play your rest, kind of relax, so yes, this is a long, a long day for Crumble. So I think he'll probably sleep pretty well, but you can see he doesn't stop his tail from flying around.
He's had a hard time getting him to school tomorrow, you must have missed your team.
Usually hops out of the vehicle pretty quickly, pretty easily in the morning, and you can tell he knows where he's going, like, he knows where he's going, he knows where he's going in his building, he knows the students that he's working with, he's got, he's quite familiar with kind of the routine of his day, so he does nice. But if there's any questions, any unhappy answers or anything about what he's been doing, or what he's been up to? Tony, what's, probably not a quantifiable number necessarily, but just the impact on staff in terms of time that they would allocate to kids who are in need of attention, personalized attention like that, can you talk about some of those benefits? Yeah, I mean, I think of, let's, you know, like, in a door, like, you have a student who maybe is getting, I mean, this, that happens, probably on a, on a weekly basis, student is having a hard time getting out of the vehicle, that might be that we're playing someone for student services, children or people, it might be playing a sister person, well, maybe it's a case manager, calling parents, you know, a couple different times, maybe if you have split household, and you'll have Crumble come in and have to have no staff or staff come out, and you'll pull him in as a challenge to, maybe he just wants to go inside, I don't know. There we go. And I have some situations like that, or even in student services, we use, have a student who's struggling, that just leaves student service, for whatever reason, something's going on, and maybe this student came, generally had, you know, we get there, and now he's able to get there, or it takes less staff to do it, but then supporting staff, and we've, the incident in December wasn't easy for our staff, right? Really think of our eighth grade teachers especially, right? And being able to have Crumble there, I think, was just a benefit, and when there's stressful situations going on, early on, the unfortunate incident happened in Georgia, right, we're like, okay, how is this going to impact us? And it was helpful to have Crumble there, or it was helpful to have those supports there, because we weren't sure what that response was going to be, like, they call our staff, we're students responding, so I think our staff will say, like, "I really need to see Crumble today, I'd love to see Crumble today," or you'll walk in the halls in the morning, and like, "Okay, this is how I need to start," or "This is a rough morning," it just, he, his presence just brings it out, and brings a little energy, brings a little pep. But yeah, I think there's been a couple of things that have happened originally nationally, but it's, he uses therapy, that calming presence, and we're always curious, how's it going, how's it going to go, and I don't know how it's gone, if we need to, but I know that it went much better because he's there.
I think it's so incredibly fantastic, and the examples of like, what you just shared about being able to like, help students, you know, who didn't want to come to school, get out of the car, come into school, for people who are, maybe have cats and dogs, you know, who maybe don't know the benefit of pets as much, and say, "Oh, isn't that huge and nice that they have, you know, a dog or an animal at the school?" But then to hear some of these really specific examples of how they are helping students, incredibly powerful, and I just, you're so incredibly fortunate.
So I'm just curious, how long can an animal like Crumble work? Because obviously it's a high stress, it's a lot of, it's work, how long do you typically see animals? And I know it can vary, but...
Typically, the dogs tell us, so you'll notice they might shine, like, do a vest all of a sudden, they might be reluctant to get out of the car, or not looking forward to going to work, and those are all kinds of signs that maybe Crumble's interested in working right now, or maybe Facebook rank, or we can talk about, so your back, or something like that. But the fact that he's eagerly jumping into the car and waltzing around the school, it's not like he's in his own place.
I always say that talking about the girl.
I would say here, he, I mean, I'd say on a daily basis here, I'm trying to think, like, in the morning, probably, I bet he probably goes in, like, five hours a day where he's like, working with somebody, or doing things accurately with the students or staff, I mean, there's times where he's, we don't have something to handle, you can tell he's tired, he kind of zonks out, he just kind of like, you know, you can tell he needs a break, why should just kind of take vest off, put him in the office, just let him sit, he veggers out, and it really depends, so like, today you can tell, tonight when I put the vest back on, I'm just doing for me, future pressure next night, so I had a presentation at five and at six, at five o'clock, he walked away from me and walked through the cafeteria, visiting everybody in the cafeteria, in autory, I should say, and then after that, he was tired, he was just like, kind of walking, went off to the corner, and as soon as you can tell, he's got a spot in my office, under a table, that's where he likes to go, and you can tell he's ready to go, so you know, when he goes there, it's like, all right, we're going to let him be for a little while, so he'll learn those signs as he kind of, whether what he wants and what he doesn't want to do, so.
Well, we're now so grateful to our friends with Custom Canyon, all you've done for our students and our community, just truly remarkable, loving, giving people the you are, thank you. But I've got to give a tip of the hat to the Longquist family.
Yes, definitely.
To, this is really taking one for the team, isn't it? I'd ask one time, you know, how often you have to vacuum the carpets, but I won't go there. Holy Coys helping with that, but I'm just, the loving nature of both your kids, seeing how sweet you both are, and the love that you're giving to our Crumble, you know, it's really been, thank you.
I mean, this dog here is just, this is remarkable.
Yeah, go and get courage back.
There was, there was discussion of support reptiles, so.
My daughter would be onboard.
Onboard.
Leslie takes a jelly for a nice big walk at night, just to kind of, you know, get out, and he's a great dog, and he's, we're very fortunate to be able to have him, he's great every day, and then, you know, and he's around the house, but the kids in the community that are benefiting with staff, when you see him, it's been really fun to watch, and it's, it's fun, it's been really fun, so.
We have a beautiful family, thank you for lending your patience, we appreciate it. Leslie, thank you.
That's a very official-looking school photo of Crumble there on that last slide.
It was, we, we were doing staff load, he does have an ID that I, we needed, we're trying to find, I get, um, yeah, we were staff load, and Leah was like, "Okay, if we can get him, so you can just put a tree right above where the camera was," and his ears go up, it looks like he's posing for it, he knew it was above that camera, so we have official school photos and official school ID, so he's, you know, he's on the payroll. It's fantastic, so Scott, sorry.
Aubrey, we had the schools reach out to us to ask about, you know, we, I mean, you have learned so much, that I'm sure that you have the love and knowledge to share with that. You know, that's your child, I don't know, hypothetically, they might be getting one, I don't know what's in the, this is a great gap.
Tell them the tree budge was enormous, so that we get all of the dogs.
We're other friends. Ooh, okay, do you want to introduce, okay, so first of all, this is Alex and Deb, just know by Alex, Biz, and Mount Cora alum, which is really cool. And do you want to introduce, this is Violet, Violet is actually Courage's daughter, she is just over two years old, she's my personal service dog. And this is Courage, Courage is four years old, and she was being trained to be a service dog for about two or three years after, and then the administration of our facility decided that they thought she should come around and have puppies, so she can have eight puppies and seven of them are in our program right now. But Courage and these two are a team, and they just do a really nice job together, so. We named Courage, I have to say, Courage and I go into schools quite often for elementary session, and so the little kids are saying, "Why'd you name her Courage?", and we say, "Because it takes courage to ask for courage." So we can start implementing that thought in our kids at early age, we're hoping that we do. He's beautiful, yeah. I don't know, I think Courage has gone a long way.
Crumble's looking at Courage like, looking here. You are singing that way anyway right now.
You're a crumble, it's funny.
He has that potential.
Can we take a picture for our board recap, our newsletter that we put out? Let's get y'all together, and, oh, I love that, that was, yeah. Ooh, well, that would be better.
Courage is like, thanks. He would watch over there, so.
Terrific, getting everyone kind of together. Annika, you are doing such a great job loving up that dog.
I know.
How do I sit here now? Mrs. Lund, would you join?
Are we sitting?
Here, we can do one more. Oh, always prepare. Okay. Good, we're good. One, two, three.
Treat.
Oh, that's so.
I don't have three, so I'm scared to give it to one.
Thank you for all you do, it's so good to see you, I appreciate you so very much, thank you for what you've done for our kids and our families. A little rest time tonight, another, thank you for having Crumble for us, Annika.
No one's getting, it's all right. You guys are freezing, I would like to go to bed now.
It's going to be a great start. I'd like for your heads up. All good dogs for the heavens and warbees.
School news, no one can start us off?
Sure, um, I can't say that there's anything particularly new, I think a lot of people are excited for finals, well, maybe not excited, maybe that's not the right word, excited for second semester, I know all my friends are excited about graduating, and then of course, you know, winter sports still going on, as far as like music, there's nothing really happening in the near future, there's still an ensemble way off, but other than that, I don't think there's anything.
Court members, can I brag a little for a minute? I have the pleasure to write a letter of recognition for this accomplished young woman, and let me tell you on behalf of the board how grateful we are for what you have done to serve as a liaison to our student body, but then just to think about all that lies ahead for you now, can you tell everyone about the schools that you're applying to?
Oh, uh, yeah, sure, I've applied to, I think, I think, 15 schools, just for fun, and, I mean, they're all for political science, of course, I applied to a lot of them back in October, but like UW Madison, Minnesota, Michigan, stuff like that, but I'm planning to hopefully go to the East Coast, like Boston, or New York, or DC.
That's fantastic, and we know that you're just going to be a tremendous success no matter what you do, especially with your high sense of mission related to politics and policy, and gosh, it's been great to have you be a part of this, so thank you. Say, as we say, as we get ready to say goodbye to our senior class today, we welcomed our freshman class up to the high school, not obligated, we have the program, as Prince Will Longfost mentioned, but we did have all of the eighth graders come over to the high school and get a feel for the school, which was just a real treat, and they're going to be in the process of course selection now that they're in the process of doing their four-year plan of study. I also wanted to note that I received this packet in the mail just the other day, and this is the official delegate mailing for the WASB upcoming meeting that we have, and if I remember right, is that going to be, was supposed to be our delegate?
I think it's that.
It was me, but I can't go. And Leah was alternate.
My alternate, I was like, I'm probably the alternate.
So I wanted to share this with you, and certainly I can give everyone a copy of the packet if you'd like, but in the past, with the court's permission, maybe we would just let Court Lipscomb vote her quote-unquote conscience on a number of the topics that are important.
Arguing about the may's, might's, should's, and shall's for four hours, you're going to love that.
Thank you for serving in that role, we sure do appreciate it.
All right, moving on to our personnel transactions, is there anything?
Madam President, may I just take a moment to acknowledge the outstanding work of Kathy Tris, Kathy Tris has been a custodian with us for 23 years, spending the bulk of her time at the high school, and then because of her outstanding efforts in 2022, she was promoted to be the head custodian of the Early Learning Center. And if you ever get a chance to see Kathy in action, she surrounds herself with kids, the kids just adore her, and she's just got such a warm spirit about her that it just made it a natural fit to have her serve in the role as head custodian, just kind of has some big, we're going to have some big shoes to fill with Kathy's departure, but she's more than earned it, she really has, like, the positive impact on our schools, and I know you joined me in saying thank you to her for 22 years of service with our district, check that, 23 years of service with the district.
Would anyone want to make a motion to approve our personnel transactions? Motion by Sarah, seconded by Tom, all those in favor of approving our personnel transactions, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Looking at number five, our consent agenda, is there anything that anyone would like to pull out to discuss? It does have our wrestling partner with, and...
To approve consent agenda?
Second. Motion by Joel, seconded by Leah, to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Our discussion items, we have a pile of committee member reports, Tom, would you be willing to start with PGC?
Yes, so buildings and drones have been placed since our last meeting on December 17, and also earlier today, the medical session, both times related to selection of an architect for the reference of any building issue, so generally wanted details of that, based on our close session.
Any questions? Joel, would you please talk about that?
We met back in early December, before all of our vacations, the meeting was mainly with, related to PMA advisors, and I met with Josh Barrie from there, talking about investment strategy related to the $10 million borrowing we did late last year, my understanding is that money was funded and has actually turned out to have been invested at this point, which is fantastic. In addition, there was a couple of donations, continued partnership with Softball Club, and we're adding follow-holes to our defense repair of our softball diamond, and then there was also an anonymous donation of $1,200 for supporting the school lunch money, so I appreciate, appreciate those things. We have a meeting next Monday, and I'm assuming it will be filled with more discussion of investments, bond issuance, and all other things, fantastic, enjoy it.
Any questions? I have, sure, for the village, just a heart, I'm right.
It was all ready for education.
Oh, sorry, that went first.
And so we talked a little bit about literally the art and science of, uh, how to come about evidence-based grading. It's, uh, again, just clear how much work that the whole staff is putting in, both appoint people within the relying approach behind the scenes to bounce ideas off of, uh, to come up with some of the rubrics. Uh, and it's, it's also clearly at the same time, like, there's still a lot of questions that we have to work through. So really appreciate, uh, Sarah and the team coming forward with this, uh, in-depth discussion and allowing a lot of time. Uh, because every time you answer one question, then you're peeling back the onion a little bit. And, uh, obviously, everyone's just working through the same goal of having a system that rewards, uh, actual mastery of knowledge and is rigorous, and then also works well toward preparation for college and other post-secondary activities. That was, that was the bulk of the time that we spent.
Any questions? Sarah, do you have anything, your community college? Uh, village report, um, I can start. Uh, the village met on the fourth of December. Um, it was actually a fairly short meeting. Uh, they did talk about the moratorium on electric smoking, uh, retailers again, and what they have decided is it would just be for a short amount of time, a hundred and eighty days. And basically, they want to, or they, you know, voted for this to take place, um, just so that they felt like they can do their research, they can do their due diligence to figure out what's an appropriate amount. Uh, so my understanding is it will now go to the Public Safety Committee. They will do some research and have some discussions, then make a recommendation to the board. I know that was, um, relevant to the district. They even in their discussion mentioned, you know, connecting, uh, you know, concerns from the school district about being, making sure they were being responsive to community concerns. Um, they also talked about that at the meeting in January, which will take place on the eighth, uh, that there's gonna be a presentation about, about formal housing and how that's gonna be built into the new development. Um, and that there are, one other thing that I would note is that there's two people on the board that are up for, uh, an election, as well as Brian, who is the president. Not that any of you should be running for the village board, but just so you know. All righty, moving on then to our action. I have safety. Oh, goodness, I'm sorry. Just read right over that. Sorry.
That's okay. We, so safety wellness, we met on December sixteenth. Um, the meeting was led by Dr. Slarno. That was the same day as the other life treaty. Um, and so I wanted to start by just thanking Brian, who was not able to be with us because we left school that day to go to other life and help manage, help them, help advise them, consult with them, help support them, and help manage their medication process. Big thanks to him. It was a hard day for everybody and for him to then also go back to that situation. Just spoke a lot, I think.
We are sure, man, you're under a quick mention that today, about the night he came back to school, which you know, Brian Johnson's over there again. Lending again, so that's why he's absent here tonight. Thank you. We'll be sure to pass that with thoughtful comments on.
Um, we had a, our meeting started off with an update from Bridging by Brighter Smiles, Jamie Sixty. From Bridging Brighter Smiles is a, a statewide organization that does, um, mobile, mobile dentistry for underserved populations. And they, they comment, um, they service about roughly eighty or so young students every year. And they do basic dental, um, examinations, cleanings, fluoride, um, sealants, and, and those kinds of things. And they have some, they, I would encourage you to look at the, look at the meeting agenda and the presentation they gave there, and a lot of good, a lot of interesting stats on the state of, um, young children's dental health in the state of Wisconsin, which is not as good as you think. Um, statewide. We had a policy update, we, which will come, a review of policy that'll come back to the board, uh, the equity update. Um, the, um, we recently had a official IDI group training and planning for more of that. That training's also been extended to members of the district office as well. And SESA Six, the Center for All, is gonna be joining us for our March workshop. Um, mental health update. There were screeners, screeners that have been done at this point through all the buildings, and we've been working through the results of those meeting students. Um, particularly on that day, we were trying, like, at that point, we were looking to see if we were going to have more student reaction, more student needs and staff needs as a result of the sixteen. Um, we didn't know much on that day, but we were planning on bringing in additional support on that day. And, um, yeah, the school safety update, again, was really just talking, talking about the, the sixteen. So one thing that, um, we mentioned as part of that update is that in addition to the safety task force, it's community-based that we're, that's running, there's a mental health and wellness group internal that is running. So, forward to hearing those presentations. Uh, next meeting is January twentieth, which will be an abbreviated meeting for.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Now. Action items. Here. Our first reading, consider revisions of the policy five twenty-two point one drug free.
So the personnel committee met, um, regarding this policy, and it has a few updates that I'll just highlight here. Um, really, the majority of the work done in this policy was just to reorganize, so it's, um, clearly use of headings and what is prohibited acts and what's permitted. Um, so lots of these things were just moved around versus added. Um, I will touch on a couple of things that were added to these, to this policy rather than just reorganization. Um, one of such pieces are the off-world conduct. Um, this is a new section to the policy, and it discusses disciplinary, um, action that may result from drunk alcohol uses and non-personal time. So it just really lets folks, you know, that affect, that just on employees' credibility that could have, um, a disruptive reaction at that, at work. Um, and then it also references, um, uh, tobacco and tobacco, e-cigarettes. This policy did not, um, address that previously, so now it is included in this policy and cross-referenced with our eight thirty-one tobacco use, um, and tobacco-related devices on school premises. So it just incorporates that portion as well. So any, can you get, talk about the policy?
I had only one question. Um, letter C under use of resources for treatment. We referenced, um, employee assistance program. I just wondered how easily accessible that information is. Should it be anyway linked or, excuse me, linked or referenced in here, you know, some of us?
We could definitely link it in there, but I would say it is really readily available to all of our staff on, and when it goes out.
I figured as much, but that was the last thing that I wondered.
We could definitely link it here. If we have cross-reference, that would be great.
I have two other questions. One, under permitted acts, the unlawfully distributing dispensing and testing. Yeah, I'm assuming that the language unlawfully would cover, like, a coach giving a inhaler or a pen or anything like that. So that's okay. I figured that's not too bad. I figured, just ask. And then under permitted acts, if you go to the third, the third line down, employees who use or possess an over-the-counter drug and take the prescription, I wonder if that, if they should retake the medication? Because if we're talking about over-the-counter, it's not a prescription. And then in the unredline version, where it says policy and it looks like there's a period, in the unredline version, that second sentence under permit, permitted acts, um, there's not actually a period, just.
I was like, this is a really long sentence.
And then, uh, yep, and then it says, it should say, and takes that second sentence should.
Oh, yes.
The prescription. Uh, the first one is for prescription, and then the second one is the medication. And then, under use of treatment, or use of resources for treatment, in the unredline version, it says A, A, so it just needs to say A, B. Oh.
Oh, because it didn't.
It didn't auto correct it? I was like, yeah, why are there two As? Um, and then, and I apologize, because I, I came late to this meeting, and Joel left early for this meeting, so we, we had perfect timing. Um, but the off-world conduct, what does damage the employee's credibility mean? What does that mean? Like, I go to the bar and drink, and, like, my students' parents see me, like.
I think, I, I think the policy is written in, in general, because it, it really won't depend on the individual situation. Um, I don't think it's intended for any kind of recreational use, use, you know, of appropriate, inappropriate stance, but I think with the examples that it was listed of, like, um, use with minors, um, and such, like, that, that could definitely.
I can see that. I can see the safe, like, the, diminishes the employee's ability to safely and effectively perform their duties, which doesn't quite make sense, because we're talking about off-duty conduct, but I sort of get it, like, if they drank before they came.
Or they got a DUI, and then they can't drive, they're bus driver.
Yeah.
I also go a step further, and to guess, while we don't have a moral trick-or-treat clause in our contract, there are things that, um, true story. A person goes out drinking, happens to see underage students at the bar and buys them drinks. Um, and mom and dad find out about it, and they have younger kids at the school, now they no longer want that employee working with their child. That damages their reputation, and it makes it difficult for us to use that employee if we've got parents who suggest, I can't have that teacher. So it's purposely needless, and I can appreciate how that might cause some pause. Um, however, I think the greater judgment of this team and that of the administration would use that only in the most appropriate circumstances.
And I hundred percent agree with that, but this policy could be used when none of us are at the table?
I have great faith in this community. They'll hire good people and let good people run the positions.
All right. It's not a hell I wanna die in, but it just, like, that, the way that's worded, just.
You wanna have yourself an out, uh, so that way, in, in the event that maybe it's something worse than what I've just described.
Yep.
Um, then you have the opportunity to, uh, part ways gracefully with that individual from the organization. You're fine. You can do whatever you want.
Whatever I want.
Thank you for bringing that up, because you're right, there's a balance, isn't there?
Mm-hmm. I mean, because you could have the same thing. A teacher could go out to the bar, a parent sees them and go, well, I don't drink, so my kid's teacher shouldn't drink, and then do the same thing, where they say, I don't want that teacher to be my best teacher.
I'm sorry, that's totally illegal within their rights. Sorry, thank you.
Yeah. That's all I got.
Erin, I know there have been some, uh, gaps, Delta Eight and village ordinance, does, do we feel comfortable with, like, Delta Eight, Delta Nine, any other synthetics that are, you know, hard to classify?
So it's a direct class, right?
Yeah.
Um, I, yeah, I think the, the, the policy eight thirty-nine, eight thirty-one that is cross-references tobacco and, you know, tobacco-related products, which, again, is that, that kind of defines that, but until there's a better, like, legal definition, and then I think that we could always update it based off that. But yes, yeah, that is on our, my.
Okay, so that's still kind of a, an area that's a little murky, uh, at best with the law, without, right?
I, I think this po, yeah, and I think this policy, like, the, um, suspicion clause in here, that if we feel like anybody's under the influence of whatever person, legal or illegal, um, and aren't able to do their job safely, we, we can investigate that and make sure that they are.
Thanks. Uh, I have one substantive question and one, maybe just a bit bigger. Uh, disciplinary action, uh, same penalties apply to off-world contact, conduct as, as on-the-clock conduct, correct? Like, the discipline, disciplinary section applies to both. I'm just wondering if we move that underneath off-work, otherwise it kind of look like it might only apply to the, the other one.
Thank you. Yeah.
And then there was one sentence in the off-world conduct, and I think it was just because we were trying to squeeze in so many different clauses on it, and I'm like, oh, this is kind of awkward. And, uh, I rephrased it last night after cross-reference what I was looking at exactly, that the, uh, could maybe say examples of improper employee conduct include, but they're not limited to engaging in the use of, and on and on. Because it, that, otherwise you're putting the, uh, there's kind of like two clauses struck together there that just make it a little difficult to follow.
Do you need anything? Otherwise, I will take these things and learn from that. Anything?
Thank you so much, Erin.
I would be considering consideration of our school calendars.
Court members, thank you for the opportunity to have, um, extra time this past fall to work with our faculty and staff to develop the next iteration of our school calendars. Um, it takes, we would have to take some time to put these together, um, and the reason for that is because everybody has lots of opinions about when we should do certain things. Uh, we surveyed the community, not this time, but last time, two years ago, when we developed our school calendar, and we got some great feedback, both from our students as well as our parents and our staff. And what you see here before you is the culmination of those, uh, best thoughts rising to the top. Uh, we have a recommendation for, uh, four calendar years, four school years, so we're ahead, but we should do two at a time, where we thought it might be helpful just to kind of knock this process out. Um, and honor as much as we could people's desire to start as early as possible, but then also end as early as possible. Imagine that, if we're doing that, do things a little bit, um, as quickly as possible to maximize summer. Um, as you might remember, the language with regard to when school can start is limited by state statute to September first, unless there be some sort of construction, um, work. And at this time, we do not anticipate construction having to be packed on the schedules for two thousand twenty-six or, or twenty-seven. However, uh, we know that that could change, at which time we would bring that before the board for consideration and seek a variance or waiver from the Department of Public Instruction. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question.
Please.
On the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar, the very last day, June tenth, or June eleventh, sorry, says staff last day or with.
Board members, thank you for the effort and again to have extra time this past fall to work with our faculty and staff to develop the next iteration of our school calendars. It takes, we would have to take some time to put these together, and the reason for that is because everybody has lots of opinions about when we should do certain things. We surveyed the community, not this time, but last time, two years ago, when we developed our school calendar, and we got some great feedback, both from our students as well as our parents and our staff. And what you see here before you is the culmination of those best thoughts rising to the top. We have a recommendation for four calendar years, four school years, so we're ahead, but we should do two at a time, where we thought it might be helpful just to kind of knock this process out and honor as much as we could people's desire to start as early as possible, but then also end as early as possible. Imagine that. We have to do things a little bit as quickly as possible to maximize summer. As you might remember, the language with regard to when school can start is limited by state statute to September 1st unless there be some sort of construction work. And at this time, we do not anticipate construction having to be packed on the schedules for 2026 or '27. However, we know that could change, at which time we would bring that before the board for consideration and seek a variance or waiver from the Department of Public Instruction. Without unhappy answering any questions you may have.
I have a question.
Please.
On the 25-26 calendar, the very last day, June 10th, or June 11th, sorry, says staff last day or with principal supervisor approval, flex 7.5 hours, June 1 through 10. We've never had anything like that before. Was that, was that, I mean, we have like an extra, like, contract day that they can...
Yes, the board's contract with our teachers is 190 days, and so you will see, I've tried to put in some additional columns on either side of the schedule, and so we're actually trying to go against meeting that requirement of 190 days, but then also exercising the responsibility we have for the number of hours that must be met. So within the calendar, we have just this one year, we were able to accommodate, just because the way the calendar fell, all of the hours for our students and then some, but then we weren't able to accommodate all of our staff's schedule. And so the teachers with whom I worked said, "Hey, could we..." They floated this idea, "Could we try to have a flex schedule on that last day?" Upon speaking with the team, we all felt like that was a really great solution to a unique problem. I think, yeah, we'll check and see if it was a good one.
Cool.
Another question.
Please.
The same year, March 17th, we have free ACT and basic state testing for grades 9, 10, 11.
We're going to all try and do it all in one day?
Yep.
For all of them? I think that's fantastic, and then I don't have to remember which kids go to school on which day. Kids telling me they don't have school, and I'm pretty sure that they do have school, and I... Does that work out for every other year I did?
We're going to try it.
Okay.
A lot of the other dates, you can see, I just put little red X's just simply because I don't know the exact dates for, like, orientation and stuff, but we'll get to that soon enough.
I'm sure you will do this, but communicating the thoughtful effort that goes into the calendar, you know the communities, I was like, "Why does this happen?" Why does that happen? And not that you have to address every question, but just being vocal that, you know, there is a committee, a lot of thought goes into this, and being responsive to feedback that is gathered.
I would be sure to do that. A board recap, yeah.
Always try to do that.
Good suggestion. Thank you for that. We could shorten these calendars to 63 days, and we did 24 hours.
That'd be awesome.
Or Saturdays and Sundays and shows.
I was like, "I don't mind, I'm graduating." "I'm out, let's do it." You're right.
Dr. Slerno, what other discussion, just out of curiosity, you know, were thrown, maybe ideas that were proposed that didn't quite work out, but just some of the considerations?
Yeah, one of the key pieces was around breaks and when they have breaks. And we remember previous boards telling us that they wanted to make certain we never had spring break during the election cycle in April. And so we wanted to also be consistent, for example, with spring break to coincide as much as possible with the university. I think there's lots of differences in university, which would maybe be different than UW-Madison, than Whitewater, but to have some continuity, especially for parents who work in our district but live maybe in another community, right? That's always a factor. And then trying to maximize where possible our winter break. We tried to always incorporate at least the 22nd to start, and then on the back end, you can see, in this case, through the way the calendar falls, we will have to have a two-week break, which is different than this year, which necessitates a later leave time in June, as you can see. I saw that shrinking as it goes on to the point where I think there's just six days at the end of the cycle. I started with the way the calendar breaks. And, you know, I've heard feedback from people on that sometimes about how they wish there was a longer break, but I'm also respectful of folks who have worked, you know, to a certain extent, especially at the younger level. I feel like there's a childcare, you know, component of public school, so I appreciate that we're respecting that.
And the parents that work from home.
Right, right.
You can post to the door. Don't come in here.
I call. I know.
Two weeks is a long time ago, and then come back to routines.
Yeah, yeah.
That's hard.
I don't know, I think it was hard this year coming back on, like, that Thursday.
I know.
It was, it was like, what day is it? I don't know, I think it's Monday.
I'm not sure.
It's like Monday is Thursday wherever it was.
I do appreciate the look on them. Because I was getting a lot of, there were a couple people that asked me about next year's calendar. So we're planning out for their dates to be able to go out this far as, you know, treat for people.
Yeah, somebody even just posted, "Wait, where's the calendar?" I was like, "We're talking about it on Monday."
Has there ever been a consideration of waiting for the date, like, any, like, five minutes to front or back of the date to get out of school? That's a really great idea. Back a couple of years ago, the PPI changed the rule, I should actually say the state changed the rules to the statute, you no longer have to meet a total number of days of construction, you have to meet a total number of hours. So really, the only thing that's holding us back, to be honest with you, is that back to we have 190 days of teacher contract as opposed to what used to be 180 days of student instructional time. So, yeah, we certainly could do that. I don't know that it's going to change the outcome in terms of the calendars up until all mesh.
Number nine, future agenda items. There's anything here interesting. Number nine, schedule next meetings.
Just one, if you don't mind, as a result of some conversation we had here earlier this evening, we have added another meeting to this slate. There will be a virtual buildings, grounds, and transportation meeting on Thursday afternoon, January the 16th at 4:00 p.m. to discern where we're at with our architectural engineering. Likely that will be a closed session discussion immediately. Just want to let the rest of the board know that we are as a result of this happening. It's fantastic.
Was there a link sent out for personnel meeting for the 14th?
I don't think there's one. It should be under invite, but I will send out...
I was going to ask.
Yeah, once the agenda's settled, send that out.
Perfect, thank you.
And the Greater Day Council's Conservative Meeting is here on the 15th. I know that Dr. Slerno's been collecting RSVPs, but most everyone will be...
It's not here in the right, the cafeteria.
Oh, yes. I meant to hear Mountmore. I'm sorry. I meant here, Mountmore. I'm sorry.
Fantastic.
Where are you guys?
Hanging out.
And then our workshop on the 14th. Alrighty. Number 11, executive session. Contemplate a closed session per section 194851C, considering the employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any privileged employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to win superintendent evaluation. Do you want to make a motion to a closed session?
So, second.
Motion by Ellen, second. We'll call Joel.
Yes.
Leah, yes.
Yes.
Sarah, yes. Karla, yes.
Yes.
And also a yes. It is 7:37. I have a swing standing his bed. Those of us who came running over from the other room. Okay. Nolan, thank you for joining us.
Okay.